Item number four on this meeting of the zoning board of adjustment on this, the October 10th, 2017, and the time is now 6:35 PM, but I believe we started about 6:31. Item number four then is to conduct a public hearing regarding a request by the owner agent of the property situated in the city of Van Alstine, County of Grayson, State of Texas, being described as divisions Van Alstine Block 3, Lot E 1/2 of 7, 140 by 150, or commonly known as 250 North Dallas Avenue and 278 North Dallas Avenue, currently zoned Commercial District 1, for variance to the Van Alstine Code of Ordinances Section 43-37D (in parentheses), area setback, height, and coverage regulations to allow for a reduced lot width from 60 feet to 50 feet. Does anyone have a presentation? Anyone want to talk about this? This is a piece of property that we've looked at before, and I believe that this is just a little more housekeeping to try to... It's a piece of property that's been there for a long time with two buildings on it, so we just want to make sure that they're all right within our codes. Any other discussion? Any questions? Suzanne, did you have anything?
No, thank you.
Ms. Crowell? All right. Then, let's see, on item number five, items for consideration, it's the same item. Consider and take any action necessary regarding a request by the owner agent of the property situated in the city of Van Alstine, County of Grayson, State of Texas, being described as divisions Van Alstine Block 3, Lot E 1/2 of 7, 140 by 150, more commonly known as 250 North Dallas Avenue and 278 North Dallas Avenue, currently zoned Commercial District -1, for variance to the Van Alstine Code of Ordinances Section 46-37D (in parentheses), area setback, height, and coverage regulations to allow for a reduced lot width from 60 feet to 50 feet.
I would like to make a motion that we allow this variance as requested.
I will second that.
All in favor? Is there any further discussion first? None? Okay, all in favor? All right. Okay, that is unanimous then. And item number six in this zoning board of adjustment meeting is adjourned.
I'll motion adjourned.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned from the zoning board of adjustment meeting. All right, moving on to the regular agenda, and the time is now 6:38 PM. And first we'll do citizens' communications. I only have one card up here, there may be more folks that want to...
I think there's confusion about whether they have to fill them all or not.
Well, I believe the instruction, what it says now is that if... We're not going to shut anyone down, we're not going to try to do that. And so if you don't happen to have a card, then I'll... Up here, then I'll get it from you, or if you don't have one at all, we're still going to let you speak and put your name on one. But I'll collect that. Any others? All right, I'll just call these as I receive them, and so Mr. Clinton-Murphy, if you would please use the microphone.
How do you know that's what I'm asking? As all of you know, that we've been having some uniform problems with the fire department, and I guess I will take this off and see if I can get some more help out of people. And we might be standing on the street corners gathering up donations, money, whatever, to maybe furnish more than one pair of pants or one uniform. So there'll be a pooper sitting over there at the fire department, he probably doesn't like this, but anyway, I'm going to put something in here and if somebody else wants to do it, that's really appreciated. You'll see us out there, look, you better wear your shirt, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. All right, and next I have Sue Lynn Boyd.
I am sorry, I also, I gave Jennifer a copy of the letters, I should have those. Is it on?
Yes, you have to speak right into it.
I'm just going to read my letters that have been to the city council members.
Is it on?
No. I don't think so. I'm nodding. I don't feel like I don't deal with electronics.
A light came on.
Electronic, she's not on high. I'm just going to read the letter, I also gave one to Jennifer, I just wanted to read, so that I know that people watch on the thing, so I'm just going to read it. It says, "To city council members, a request that you would immediately vote to remove Mr. David Hibbs from the VA EDC. His posts on public social media were offensive. The B-word to women is the same as using the N-word to an African-American. Mr. Hibbs sought out a position that elevated him from a normal citizen. He filed an application and voluntarily took a position where he knew his actions would represent the city of Van Alstine. He chose to become a member of the vital board of the EDC. Any rational person would know that their actions and works are directly linked to the city, just as each of the city council members chose to campaign for their positions and the responsibilities of conduct that that position deserves and in many cases are legally bonded by law in regard to their speech and actions regarding city business. If Mr. Hibbs were truly sorry for his comments, he would have immediately apologized to Ms. Ullerton, the community, and done the honorable thing by resigning his position at EDC. I do not think this has happened. If Mr. Hibbs cannot control his impulses and emotions so as to think that a Facebook rant at a local wife, mother, and business owner is acceptable behavior, I cringe at what he would do in negotiations with businesses and industry looking to negotiate, among other things, tax credits and business incentives in the future. Further, I'm embarrassed that businesses looking at Van Alstine as a potential location will always see these types of comments from a city council-endorsed government representative. Mr. Hibbs' friends and supporters have tried the bait-and-switch theory on social media since these comments became public, and all those discussions are really moot. The point here is Mr. Hibbs' comments and the city council's duty not to support such behavior. This is particularly relevant considering recent comments of city council members and previous actions in regard to EDC members. A vote for no dismissal would be reprehensible and a rink of favoritism by city council members that are personal friends of Mr. Hibbs. I believe after comments and actions by the city council, that a no dismissal would be, in the totality of the circumstances, represent negligence within the facts herein in current government cases. Many members ran their campaigns for city council positions on having an open and transparent city government and against an alleged good old boy system in Van Alstine. A vote not to dismiss Mr. Hibbs would be proof positive that such a group is in Van Alstine and supported by the current members of the city council. I hope y'all will consider, as a woman, that was extremely offensive, and as a person who's put their money into the library and other things in Van Alstine, to have someone represent us like that is horrible, it's reprehensible. Anyway, thank you for your time."
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. All right.
We'll wait for a moment. I'm going to get over there.
Mr. Mayor, while we're waiting for Ms. Crowell to pull back up, it'll be an opportune time to maybe inform the citizens here that maybe haven't heard that we have the boil order, what's going on.
I think that's a good idea. We did have a major water leak, from what I've heard, a hydrant blew off the pipe that it was mounted on, and the level in our elevated tank dropped to such a level that first we declared emergency water use, and then a few minutes later we did declare a boil order. And so we are under that right now. They're working on that pipe, trying to get it fixed. I'm sorry? Okay, so that is true, we're under boil order. I think many of you may have received a code red alert already.
I thank you very much, because I received code red, everybody didn't say anything about a boil order, and I'm glad to know that.
Yeah, they just sent that out, that's the order that the mayor just signed, and it's been sent, so it is... I did receive the code red on the board.
And I got both calls, so I don't know why...
I got the first one. I'll bring it to the council.
I got both. Are you registered?
All right, thank you, sir. And next, I'll call them, is Brenda McDonald.
I agree totally with Sue Lynn, I'm here to speak on the same subject. When I read that on Facebook, I thought that was really, really sad, to have a businesswoman in town called that name by anyone, I don't care if they're an EDC member, but that makes it even worse that he is representing the EDC. I think if you're going to ask Randy Ellison to leave the EDC for not a whole lot of proof of anything, when you have proof that's on a Facebook page that everybody can read, I think he should have to be resigning from his position also. There was no proof for Mr. Ellison of what he did, and it sure wasn't anything like this. So I agree that we should... I asked that he is asked to resign from his position from the EDC board, because it's gotten... Everything's gotten childish and high-schoolish, and it all needs to stop, because it's hurting our town, this is a no-win situation, and we need to move on. It just needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. I think we maybe have to technically record this again, and I'm going to see if I can tighten this up or something. Mr. French?
Mayor, council members, my name's Bruce French, Vice Presidentland for Historymaker Homes and Jabez Development. I'm here for one of our cases tonight for rezoning, I believe it's item number 12. I'm about to speak at that time, if there's any questions or comments.
Oh, all right, sir. Thank you. Now, those are all the cards that I have. Is there anyone that didn't get to speak that wants to? All right, I see no hands. We'll move on with our agenda then, and so... Yes, we're going to move on with the agenda on to public hearings, and item number three is conduct a public hearing to consider testimony regarding a request for a specific use permit for an approximately 8.26 acre tract of land to allow a public primary school use. Within the city, a single-family residential district -1, in parentheses, SF-1, the property is described as a portion of G-0770 McKinney James and HRSA-G0770 acres, 24.47, generally located just southeast of the Van Alstine Middle School campus at 1314 North Cuaco Street, north of Plasminame Avenue, and east of Graywood Drive. Is anyone here to speak on this? Especially...
I have a question. I have a question. This is located to southeast of the Van Alstine Middle School? And doesn't it say southwest somewhere? I don't know.
It is west, there's a...
Yeah, I think this was posted incorrectly.
Yes, ma'am.
And has the wrong direction. Will that make a difference in a public hearing? And what was posted, was it posted this way in the paper?
It looks like there's enough of a description to generally be able to locate the property to make the notice substantially sufficient to have the public hearing.
Okay, any more comments or questions? All right, item number four, conduct a public hearing to consider testimony regarding a request to rezone an approximately 45.63 acre tract of land from single-family residential -1, or SF-1, two-family, or TF (in parentheses), multi-family, or MF (in parentheses), and upon annexation, agricultural, or HE (in parentheses). Zoning to planned development, so all of those that I just listed will be rezoned to a planned development zoning. The property is described as part of the James McKinney survey, abstract number 770, Grayson County, Texas, and being a part of Graywood Heights, in addition to Grayson County, Texas, as reported in volume 7, page 87, flat records, Grayson County, Texas, and being a part of Graywood Heights, section 2, to the city of Van Alstine, Grayson County, Texas, as recorded in volume 8, page 70, and being part of the tract of land described in a D to Keratex LP 11s, recorded in county clerk file number 2010-21778, real property records, Grayson County, Texas, generally located south of Spence Road, east of Sanford Circle, west of Graywood Drive, and north of Plasminame Avenue. Mr. French, is this one... Pardon me?
It's number 2.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, is there any comment, or are there any questions on this item? None? Okay, we'll move on then. Item number five, conduct a public hearing to consider testimony regarding a request to replat a property situated in the city of Van Alstine, Grayson County, Texas, being described as a portion of divisions Van Alstine Block 3, Lot East 1/2 of 7, 140 by 150, more commonly known as 278 North Dallas Avenue. The replat request will divide the single lot into two. Are there any questions or comments? Anyone want to present anything on this? Moving on, item number six, conduct a public hearing to consider testimony regarding a request to rezone a property situated in the city of Van Alstine, Grayson County, Texas, being described as a portion of divisions Van Alstine Block 3, Lot East 1/2 of 7, 140 by 150, more commonly known as 278 North Dallas Avenue, from Commercial District 1, or C-1 (in parentheses), to single-family residential district -60, or SF-60 (in parentheses). Any presentation, comments, or questions about this item?
Mayor, I have a question. So this is the same property that was on the voting of the zoning board of adjustment earlier? You mentioned that the setback was going to be different?
Yes.
So what all changes are they trying to make to this one particular property?
Well, from what I can tell, they're trying to divide 278 North Dallas. They're going to re... They want to replat that and divide it into two lots. And also, I think they're changing 278, they want to change it from Commercial 1, or C-1, to single-family residential, or SF-60.
That's correct. That's our property. Yeah, what he's trying to divide into is make one margin for speech completely. Where the new picker was, now what's the opinion of the board?
Are there any other questions or comments? All right, well, we'll move on to the consent agenda then, all right? And we have four items on the consent agenda. Item number seven, consider and take any action.
Mayor, I'd like to move item number seven to the non-consent.
All right.
And I also would like to request that item number 10 be moved to the non-consent.
All right, then, we'll move on with items eight and nine on the consent agenda. Consider and take any action necessary regarding authorizing the mayor to sign a resolution declaring the Van Alstine leader the official newspaper of record for fiscal year 2018. Number nine, consider and take any action necessary regarding appointing Monica Herrera to the Van Alstine Library Board. So those are the only two items on the consent agenda. Is there any...
I'll make a motion to approve items eight and nine on the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion to approve items eight and nine on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion or comment among council? All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous, those are approved. Now we're going to back up to item number seven, consider and take any action necessary regarding minutes from the September 12th, 2017, regular meeting, September 25th, 2017, zoning board of adjustment meeting, September 25th, 2017, special call meeting, and the October 1st, 2017, special call meeting. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. On the September 12th meeting, item number 17, I asked Jennifer to go back and listen to the tape, which I believe this part got recorded. There was a comment that Mr. Baker made about how many days he wanted to be able to process a check, and I questioned that we had the minutes transcribed correctly there, so I would ask Jennifer if she had clarified that.
Yes, ma'am, I have reviewed the video, and I do find... I emailed Ms. Crowell, and then I've also placed in front of you all a color copy of an amended set of minutes on number 17, you should find it in red. I didn't find where Mr. Baker advised that he needed 25 days, but I did find where he said that 30 days would be reasonable. So that's the amendment that I added into the minutes.
So we need to amend the minutes in that section?
Yes, ma'am, it can be added if council wishes.
Okay. That was all I had for that section, was making sure that we adjusted the minutes appropriately.
Oh, I can't read that.
She added it to the back of the order.
Oh, I don't have it. Okay, great, if it's in there. Sorry, I was looking at the email version from this weekend.
Any other questions? Questions or comments about section, or item number seven? And so, with the amendment that Lieutenant Forrest told us about, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. All right, Suzanne Crowell is making a motion to accept the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. Any more discussion? Seeing no hands, or hearing any voices? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it is unanimous? All right, item number 10, consider and take any action necessary regarding approval of an ordinance or appealing ordinances, 777 and 781, regarding non-consent towing regulations. Any questions or comments?
I have a question and comment. When this was brought before the council before, I requested that we have a complete fee schedule included in this, in that when a person wants an ordinance regarding their vehicle being towed, it should also... They should also know upfront how much they're going to pay. In this ordinance that has been written up, let me get to the right things, just a minute, please. Under the fee schedule, it does tell about an application for a filing fee. It says non-consent towing for a permit, and then it says the maximum fees are usually available on the website of the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation. In addition, a wreckers service performing a non-consent tow at the request of a city may also charge $75 per hour for time. This is not exactly what I was requesting. Also, it says the amount allowed by laws. The city's fee schedule is as determined from time to time by the city manager. I don't think we have a changing city fee schedule. I still would like to see a fee schedule that if my car is going to be towed, I want to know how much it's going to cost me right then, not... I mean, when you order this ordinance... In this, uh, ordinance that has been written up, let me get to the right page, just a minute, please. Under the fee schedule, it does tell about an application for a filing fee. Uh, it says, uh, non-consent towing for a permit, and then it says, the maximum fees are usually available on the website of the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation. In addition, a wreckers, wrecker service performing a non-consent tow at the request of a city may also charge seventy-five dollars per hour for time. This is, um, not exactly what I was requesting. Also, it says the amount allowed by laws. The city's fee schedule is as determined from time to time by the city manager. I don't think we have a changing city fee schedule. I still would like to see a fee schedule that if my car is going to be towed, I want to know how much it's going to cost me right then, not, I mean, when you order this ordinance, I would like to see it in the ordinance and stated specifically the fees. The rest of the ordinance, I do not have a problem with, but I do think that a person should know what the fees are to have the vehicle towed.
I have a question. Um, Chief Barnes, what are the common circumstances in which non-consent tows take place?
When a non-consent tow takes place, it's going to be when someone's placed under arrest, or it's abandoned on a vehicle that's blocking the roadway. Those are non-consent. That's, we're, we're the ones taking that, that vehicle basically into custody and using the service to the wrecker company.
Yeah, I'm not against having the fee schedule in there, but I can't think of a time where a non-consent tow is going to take place where that's really going to be necessary, mostly.
But then, I'm talking about, look at number, uh, F on that, on page twelve to sixteen. The city's, the city's fee schedule is as determined from time to time by the city manager. That's what I want to know, is what is the fee schedule now? When it is changed, it, it's, it's not consent or non-consent, and it doesn't read that way. Um, if he, if the city manager determines a fee change in excess of twenty percent is warranted, he can seek approval from the council. But I want to know what is the base of this when the city manager determines what it is?
That, that particular provision relates to permitting. Um, the reason this looks that way is we talked last time when the rotation ordinance was originally adopted. It was adopted, and then a second ordinance was adopted, um, to impose the fees, and so the scut, the discussion was, we don't want it to be two ordinances since we're changing it, so bring what's in that fee ordinance and put it in this, so it's all in one, and this is what is in there. Um, the reason that the maximum fee that could be charged to someone whose pers, whose vehicle is towed, um, and it's a non-consent tow, tracks the state law, is that if the state changes their fee schedule, the Texas Department of Licensing changes theirs, your ordinance doesn't become out of compliance with, with state law. It just keeps it in compliance automatically.
So what is a consent fee?
It's the same thing.
Yeah, it wouldn't be something we would regulate anyway. We'd do non-consent always.
Yeah, the, the police department doesn't do consent tows. That's when the owner calls.
So consent would be?
But this governs our towing service, right?
Yes, who we're gonna, who we're gonna use?
So, but we don't know what the tow service is going to charge, even though we have this ordinance. Is that correct?
Well, they, they cannot charge more than what the state allows.
And that's, that's determined on, too, uh, say, an accident where a vehicle's wrapped around a tree. It's going to take more services to remove that vehicle than the vehicle that's been stopped, or somebody has a warrant, uh, on the side of the road. So the state sets those fees so that, you know, you don't have people out here charging a thousand dollars every time they hook up to a vehicle.
This, this does not relate to, like, if you park, I don't know, say you park in a private parking lot that says, you know, towing enforced, don't park here, that owner can call whoever they want to have a vehicle towed. That, that's not regulated by this ordinance. This is only regulating a tow service provider who is providing a service to the city. And so that would be when the police department needs a tow. Like you said, usually if there's an accident, a vehicle's abandoned, or if they're placing someone under arrest, and they're not able to take their vehicle.
I understand. My concern was just, say your car, say you're on the side of the road, and you have car trouble, and your car has to be towed in.
That person, the owner of the car can call anyone they want, um, to come tow. It's just if they abandon their car in a dangerous location, and the police department finds it, then the police department would be calling. But if someone is calling from their own car because it's broken down, then they can call anyone they want, and they can, you know, ask them what they charge and decide if they want to use them or not.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance as written.
All right. We have a motion to approve the ordinance as written. Is there a second? No second? Fine. But, uh, I guess the motion fails without a second.
Is it just the fee schedule you guys want, or?
I would like to hear that, no one else. I would really like to see a better clarification on the fee schedule.
In, in my opinion, um, the ordinance is written. Um, I like it. Yes, I agree that right now it doesn't fit because we don't have the multitude of, um, towing companies, but if we're to grow, I mean, we got a bunch of houses coming in and everything else, if we are to grow, then it will be something that will move in that direction, so I don't see changing it for now to possibly have to change it in the future. Uh, I think it's, I think it's a good ordinance as written. That's just my opinion.
All right. Um, do we have another motion, or is there more discussion?
Suzanne, you got, you getting all that?
Uh, no, they're too quiet on the other side of the table, so what's the motion? Where do we stand?
Brad made a motion to repeal the ordinance for towing.
And there was no second.
And there was no, oh.
And there was no second.
The motion was to accept the ordinance as written.
To accept the ordinance as written. The revised ordinance is written.
That was to combine the fee schedule? So we had two separate ordinances, and the idea of this ordinance is to combine the two, since we've gone back to the, uh, primary secondary.
That's correct.
So that's, that's the ordinance I was, made the motion to, uh, adopt.
Hold up. Um, do you want to reurge your motion to approve?
Is there any, any other action that you guys would like to see that needs to be required that you all want in the motion?
I would like, I'm sorry, but I would like a better clarification on the fee schedule, uh, to show up in this ordinance.
We can do that.
Can you do that?
Yes, ma'am.
We'll just, we'll direct it. So can you make a motion to table it for the next meeting?
I think that's what we'll have to do.
I'll make that motion.
All right. There is a motion to, uh, to table this item, um, or to table approval of the ordinance, um, until the, the next city council meeting, um, so that, uh, the proposed ordinance can be amended. Um, is there a second?
A second.
All right. Um, is there any further discussion on, uh, tabling this, uh, item? All right. Seeing none, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have, uh, um, four ayes. Um, any?
Yep.
Okay. We have, uh, we have four in favor of tabling the motion and one opposed, so the, the motion will be tabled until the next city council meeting. Um, now, we move on to the, uh, regular non-consent agenda. Um, consider and take any action necessary regarding a request for a specific use permit for approximately eight point two-six acre tract of land to allow a primary, a, a public primary school use within the single-family resident, uh, uh, within the single-family residential district dash one, or SF one in parentheses. The property is described as a portion of G dash zero seven seven zero McKinney James and, uh, HRS, um, A dash G zero seven seven zero acres twenty-four dot four seven, generally located just southeast, and we, we just recently discussed that that's, uh, that's an error, that it is, uh, generally southwest. Um, but I'll continue reading. Um, of the Van Alstine Middle School campus at thirteen fourteen North Waco Street, north of Blasen Game Avenue, and east of Graywood Drive. Any, uh, discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the specific use permit.
All right. We have a motion to?
A second.
We have a second. Um, any more discussion? Any discussion at all? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have four. All right. It is unanimous, um, and so the, uh, specific use permit is approved for the, uh, public primary school. Um, item number twelve, consider and take any action necessary regarding the, the request to rezone an approximately four, forty-five point six-three acre tract of land from a single-family residential district, uh, dash one, or SF one in parentheses, two-family, or TF in parentheses, multifamily, or MF in parentheses, and upon annexation, agricultural, or HE in parentheses, zoning, two planned development zoning. The property is described as a part of the James McKinney survey, abstract number seven seventy, Grayson County, Texas, and being a part of Graywood Heights, uh, in addition to Grayson County, Texas, as recorded in volume seven, page eighty-seven, flat records, Grayson County, Texas, and being a part of Graywood Heights, uh, section two, to the city of Van Alstine, Grayson County, Texas, as recorded in volume eight, eight seventy, and being part of the tract of land described in, in D two, Caratex LP eleven, recorded in, uh, county clerk file number two zero one zero dash two one seven seven eight. Real property records, Grayson County, Texas, generally located south of Spence Road, east of Sanford Circle, west of Graywood Drive, and north of Blasen Game Avenue. Any, any discussion or any questions? Sir, Mr. French, do you want to present at this time?
Yeah, my name is Bruce French. I'm with History Maker Homes in Chavez Development. We have the, the subject property that was just outlined, uh, under contract. Uh, we have, uh, this is the second time we've come before the city council. Uh, earlier this summer, there was an initial plan, which now has been modified to, uh, PD, uh, which we've worked with staff, and we've presented it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, received unanimous consent, and I'm here to answer any additional questions or comments any council members may have.
All right, sir. Thank you. Um, are there any, uh, questions or comments?
No, I'm bad.
All right. Uh, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All right. And, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. It is unanimous, and so, um, this, all these, these properties in these different zonings are now zoned as, uh, planned development. Thank you, sir. Um, item number thirteen, consider and take any action necessary regarding preliminary plat for Graywood Heights, page two, being a forty-five point six-three acre tract out of James McKinney survey, abstract seven seventy, city of Van Alstine, Grayson County, Texas. The property is generally located east of Sanford Circle, west of Graywood Drive, by and south of Spence Road. Um, this is an area that we, we just, uh, we, we annexed some, just a, a couple of meetings ago, or, sir. Um, are, so are there any questions or comments among council?
Is this all so presented by History Maker Homes?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, again, Bruce French, and I'm here representing the, uh, landowner and also be the builder.
Um, is there a, a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. Is there a second? All right. We have a second. Um, is there any further discussion or any more questions? All right. Seeing no hands. Um, all in favor? Oh, okay.
Aye.
Your favor. All right. It is unanimous, so thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Item number fourteen, consider and take any action necessary regarding a request to rezone a property situated in the city of Van Alstine, Grayson County, Texas, being described as a portion of Divisions Van Alstine Block Three, uh, Lot, uh, E One Half of Seven, one hundred and forty by one hundred and fifty, more commonly known as two seventy-eight North Dallas Avenue, from Commercial District One, or C One in parentheses, to Single Family Residential District Dash Sixty, or SF Dash Sixty in parentheses. Any discussion, any questions? Um, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Um, is there a second? I'll say. All right. We have a second. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing no hands. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. It is unanimous, and so that is reasoned. Um, item number fifteen, consider and take any action necessary regarding the request to replat a property situated in the city of Van Alstine, Grayson County, Texas, being described as a portion of Divisions Van Alstine Block Three, uh, Lot, E One Half of Seven, one hundred and forty by one hundred and fifty, more commonly known as two seventy-eight North Dallas Avenue. Uh, the replat request will divide the single lot into two. Is there any discussion on this item? All right. Uh, is there a motion?
We have a motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a second. Um, any more, any more discussion?
Just make one comment. All of these, uh, changes were approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
That's all. Good point. All right. Uh, all in favor? We have four in favor, all opposed?
Oh, I was, I was in favor. Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Okay. All right. So it is unanimous. It is approved. Uh, item number sixteen, consider and take any action regarding preliminary plat for Chapel Creek Farms, um, at Van Alstine, being eighty-nine point nine seven four acre tract out of the Raymond Rubio, uh, survey, um, abstract number nine nine seven, city of Van Alstine, uh, Grayson County, Texas. The, uh, this property is generally located southeast corner of Old Highway Six and Judd Road. Any discussion, any questions? Well, if it runs east and south, it's our, I believe it's our, is that our northern of ETJ border? Judd Road is close to it?
I cannot hear.
This is pro, property in the city limits or the ETJ?
Yeah, no, I just can't hear what he just just.
So this is property that we are living on, is in the ETJ in the far north part of our ETJ, right?
It's, yes, it's about a mile south of the north boundary of the ETJ.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any, uh, any more questions, any comments? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Uh, any more discussion? Seeing no hands. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. It is, uh, unanimous, and, uh, preliminary plat is approved. Uh, item number seventeen, consider and take any action necessary regarding amending the Van Alstine Economic Development Corporation fiscal year twenty eighteen budget in the amount of, uh, twenty-six thousand two hundred and eight dollars to cover the costs of repairing the rail spur and EDC's participation in the city's comprehensive plan. Now, this, this was not something in public hearings, and so I don't know if we have a, this, uh... Now, this was not something in public hearings, and so I don't know if we have this, Ms. Carr here? Did you have a presentation?
Mayor, uh, mayor, I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify. The agenda does say, where is that, $26,208. I misread Ms. Carr's agenda request. It is $26,200 is what her request showed.
All right, so the agenda request was for $26,200, not $208 as I stated earlier.
Where, where's the location of the rail spur?
It's in the industrial park. I'll check. I have thirty minutes.
Okay, at the far south end of the industrial park. Thank you.
Any more questions? Do I have the mic?
We didn't cut in the budget. It was in the budget, but if we were asked to cut it, we, that was one of the items we took out. But the board decided that the repairs really need to be done this year. We already had the bids.
You've got?
We have the budget.
You've got the reserves?
We do.
I make a motion that we grant the amendment to the budget for the EDC.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any more discussion, any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it is unanimous, so it is approved. The amendment is approved. Item number 18, considering taking the action necessary regarding authorizing the mayor to sign a resolution nominating candidates to serve as members of the Grayson County appraisal district board of directors. Is there any discussion on this item?
Who are the candidates?
It's just Charlie Williams, that's it?
No.
From Van Alstine, that's it?
But there are several candidates, right?
Right, Charlie Williams, Brett Graham, Lynn Mixson, Michael Breck, and Ryan Johnson.
And how many members are needed?
There are five members that serve on the board, and they're all up for an election.
And it's only five, right?
It's the best my knowledge, ma'am. And the council may choose to nominate one, or all five, or three. It's up to your preference.
I make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign a resolution nominating the five candidates that are running for reelection for the Grayson Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
All right, we have a motion to authorize me to sign that resolution. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Any more discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it is unanimous, so I will be signing that resolution.
Are you raising your hand to say a aye?
I'm just saying aye. I can wave my hand, but you're gonna have to turn around and look.
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay.
All right, item number, let me go higher. Considering taking the action necessary regarding approval of a resolution authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation in a principal amount not to exceed $500,000, and authorizing certain other matters related thereto to fund construction of a public works facility and relocation of approximately 1,000 feet of water line. To me, I noticed it, oh, okay, well, go ahead with yours.
Mine's for our city engineer. Am I correct in that this 1,000 feet of water line is not something that's in the budget, but something that we have been notified that is a requirement that we don't have a choice, we have to do?
Yes, yes, ma'am. TechStop.
Microphone.
I'm there. Yes, ma'am. We were notified by TechStop last month that they have a drainage project on East Jefferson.
It's, you know, you have to get real close to it.
Doesn't have any slides. Hey, I'll help you out.
Get it up to your lips, Lynn.
But I'm halfway bent over. Yes, ma'am. We were notified by TechStop last month that they are widening the drainage work on East Jefferson from approximately Booty Drive to Lincoln Park, and it will require, there is city facilities in the existing right-of-way and in conflict with that drainage work. So because the city facilities are in TechStop right-of-way, we're required to get out of their way and do that so that it wasn't planned. It's a drainage project that showed up last month on Steve's inbox.
So this isn't a choice?
This is not a choice. No, they're planning to let the project bid it first of next year, so we've got about three months to get it relocated.
And this public works facility that we're talking about, this is something that we have in the budget? Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's the relocation.
It's in the approved budget for that east, to be moved east of town, correct?
East, out near the wastewater treatment plant, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are there any, any more questions, any more comments?
Mayor, we do have Jayden Lawrence here. He is able to take any questions regarding the financing of the project, if y'all have any questions.
Good evening. All right, I appreciate y'all taking the time to have me out here tonight. Over the last couple of months, I've been in contact with Steve and Jennifer about this type of issuance. If you don't mind, real quick, I'm gonna go ahead and pass out a number run for y'all to take a look at, and I'll talk about its process, and also kind of the projections that we have so far right now concerning y'all's budget, and kind of things that we need to get prepared for moving forward in this type of issuance. Sound good?
Sure.
Ms. Carr, I'll make sure that this, these numbers are sent to you as well.
Okay. Hey, Lee, can you, can you turn me a little bit towards him and where he's speaking in the right-hand side?
He's standing in the middle.
Is he? So just a little bit more to the right, now I can see him. Boy, where is he?
I got one more. Anybody else?
I can see Tiffany barely yet.
You get it. Okay, so, real quick, I'll tell you a little bit about our firm. We are a firm based out of South Lake. I myself have been working for the firm for a little over three years now. What I specifically do is I work on your INS side of your budget, which deals with those types of issuance with all types of municipalities, which are schools, hospitals, counties, water districts, anything and everything in between. In the recent past months, y'all have also worked with our sister company, which works on your maintenance and operations side. Y'all have done some lease purchase agreements, I believe, with Marty, who has done some equipment purchases for y'all. It's kind of how I got in contact with Steve for this type of issuance, and he wanted to really wait on to make sure that we got the engineering bids in place first. And once we got those in place, we were able to start moving forward and kind of get this ball rolling. Other than that, really, Jennifer's been a big help for me, kind of getting some information back and forth, getting your audits and everything to kind of get this thing, just initial steps. And that's really what this meeting's for. This meeting is what's referred to as a post-notice meeting, and in that post-notice meeting is saying that you have the intent to issue not to exceed a $500,000 issuance for these two projects. Jennifer had expressed to me last week that because of what TechStop had done, and said that this has to be included as well, we had to update issuance a little bit for that. The current estimates, from what I've heard from your engineering, is that it could be around the ballpark of $130,000 for the water line, and then for the public works facility, it'll be $335,000. So with all that included, we did the not-to-exceed amount just to be safe, and that'll all be shown in the breakdown here in a minute. But really, when you look at these types of issuances, there's really three ways you could go about it. One is called a maintenance note. Those are a little bit more restrictive. They can only be going out for seven years. They are cheaper, but that's, that's really one of the main things, is that it only has a seven-year term limit to be able to pay back the entire note. For the type of issuance they all have, it really goes to the second step, which is called a certificate of obligation. Certificate of obligation is really what we try to, you know, try to look at for issuances that fall a little bit, you know, under the $1 million range, and so they don't take a big burden on cities or any municipalities for that matter. And in that issuance, there's a few things that are involved with the post-notice meeting like tonight, which is referred to as, we run an ad in the local paper two consecutive weeks in a row, that states pretty much the exact same thing that you see on the agenda. And then after that, we have the authorization meeting, which really puts that you commit to this amount for this certain amount for the terms and all that. We'll make sure that, there's a couple of other things involved in between there, but that's really the things that are involved with a certificate of obligation. Now, the third option, which y'all have done before, is either a geo bond or a revenue bond. Really, you look at those, I mean, you see school districts for the most part, or large counties or tollways do huge bonds of that matter. This is not that case for y'all. That's why the certificate of obligation is really the way to go. It is a little bit more flexible in the certificate of obligation when it comes to term. You have your, right now, I have it set up for 15 years. That's definitely subject to change depending on how comfortable y'all are. After, we can kind of make a real quick run-through with the numbers. It can go all the way up to 30 years. I don't recommend that with, it kind of takes your investors away on who's willing to bid on these types of projects. But it really is, you can go anywhere from in between five to 30 years for certificates of obligation. Real quick, is that, so this is the post-notice meeting. We run the two advertisements in the paper, two consecutive weeks, and so that means that no sooner than 30 days from the first posting in the newspaper can you have your authorization meeting. So we're gonna run the ad in the newspaper on this Friday, and then we're gonna run it again the following week as well. So no sooner than 30 days are we allowed to have the authorization meeting to fully move forward in this type of issuance. During that entire time, we bring in a couple of parties involved in this. There's really the bond counsel, who is the lawyers that kind of take place and make sure that all your i's are dotted and your t's are crossed to make this issuance legal, and that everything's in good shape before we go in front of the Attorney General's office. While the lawyers are doing their thing, we also bring in what's called a private, excuse me, we bring, I'm sorry, we bring out to a firm that does private placement. And private placement firms, they bid out the project to investors across the state of Texas. We found that it is very important to keep things local. I mean, there's, there is more things that tend to be positive when you have either your local bank or somewhere around here that has maybe some ties to the community as compared to something like a Wells Fargo. I mean, I hope nobody works for Wells Fargo or anything like that, but like, larger firms, they can kind of do a little more restrictive covenants in these types of issuances, and we want to make sure that if anything were to happen, we have a bank that's invested in the state of Texas and hopefully in this community as well before we bid out those projects. And we bring that firm in, and they take out bids, they receive them back, and during that process, when they send out their bid packets for these types of issuances, the banks will get them, go in front of their boards, and they'll deliberate, all right, what's the really rate that we want to give back and think is a fair rate that, you know, would be competitive? Now, that's where we come in, is that we stand in between the banks, which we call the sharks out there, that want to get the highest interest rate, of course, and then us, that will make sure that, hey, look, if they're not gonna be competitive, or they're giving you some extra fees that are involved, we'll step in and be like, hey, you know, we're not, that's not okay, we're not gonna use y'all. I mean, thanks for putting in a bid, but, you know, that's where we want to make sure that we get you the lowest rate possible for any type of issuance. And that whole process is the bidding-out process during this 30-day window. Other than that, then after the authorization meeting, we get, I'll bring back bids for y'all. It'll have a breakdown of numbers similar to the one that you looked, that you seen in front of you, but it'll be more concrete. And then if y'all approve of this type of issuance and the bids and the one that we end up choosing, then you authorize it at that meeting, followed by two to three weeks before, it's gotta go to the Attorney General's office at this point, and that's where the lawyers get back involved, and they go in front of the Attorney General's office, represent y'all on the issuance, to make sure it's legal, like I was saying before, and then funding will hit your account roughly two to three weeks after that authorization meeting. Now, that was quite a bit. I did speak really quickly. I mean, I'd be more than happy to kind of answer any questions or comments that y'all may have about this process.
So what is the full timeline?
Full timeline is roughly...
From the beginning to when we get there, possibly?
Forty-five to 60 days is really the window that we look for. I mean, if you take a look at the paper right in front of you, as of right now, we have a delivery date of December 5th.
I'm gonna step away for just a second, and I'm only gonna be right over there. So any, any further comments or questions? All right.
I don't have any more questions regarding this. I, I assume the certificate of obligation is part of our city engineer and Air Department of Public Works Director's recommendation, and this is what...
This really goes in finance.
This really is one...
It goes to the finance and Jennifer's...
Goes to the finance and Jennifer?
Yes.
And this is with your recommendation? We're gonna pass that right down to you, Jennifer. But the certi, since Steve is unable to be here tonight, you will answer for him.
I know he certainly prefers it, and similar to what we did with government capital in the equivalent ones several years ago, and he preferred that. I didn't want to let council know just kind of how this affects our FY '18 budget, if we're prepared to talk about that. We budgeted to make a total annual payment on the building itself of $30,000. With the proposal you have, and anticipating that'll be funded in December of this year, it's my understanding that the first payment of a little over $7,000, which is an interest payment only, will be due in June of 2018, which is this fiscal year. We won't have the second payment, which would include the principal due until December of 2018, which will be in the next fiscal year. That payment is anticipated to be a little over $40,000, so this will require at least that expenditure to increase in the water fund for FY '19.
Thank you. Thank you.
So...
I just had a quick question to you, Jennifer. On the certificate for resolution, it says the obligation and principal amount not to exceed $400,000. Is that gonna be changed to $500,000, because that's what they're asking for?
Yes, sir.
And real quick, is that why we've kind of stuck with that 15-year term so far to begin with was when Steve was telling me that what they had budgeted for with that $30,000 amount. We were hitting that mark with the 15-year term and just a pretty conservative interest rate projection that we have so far. For instance, last night, I just did an issuance for a 15-year $600,000 note, and we got a bid back of 2.72%. Because we're still a little ways away before bids go back out, we do want to be conservative and fair to y'all, that use of 3%, we are still close, so hopefully rates don't move too much one way or the other. You know, preferably, because if we can stay around that 275 mark, that'd be really great considering, you know, the longevity of this term and kind of where things have been moving over the last couple of years with interest rates, so hopefully that'd be the thing. But because of this water line situation that y'all have, what's kind of moved it up, back up to that $40,000 amount, was that extra $130,000 that we had to compensate for. But if you take a look here at these numbers right in front of you, on the first page, it just shows you kind of where this money's going and where it's coming from, but the sources and uses, is that the principal amount will be given for a total of $492,000 into your project, probably be $465,000 for these two projects, the 235 or the 335, and the 130 projected kind of engineering estimate that we have so far for the water line. kind of engineering estimate that we have so far for the water line. You see over there, the issuance expenses associated with this, that goes to your financial advisor, attorney general, bond counsel, and your placement agent, and some expenses such as the municipal advisory council of Texas as well. A little bit below there, you'll see that the delivery date of December 5th. And then right now, at the very bottom table, you'll see that federal arbitrage yield of the new issue, which would be the rate that would be bid out. This is just a projection as of right now, is at 3%. But that's of course subject to change and hopefully will-
Jake, is there a penalty if they pay it off early?
So, that's also a great question. So there are a few things involved if you want to like to pay it off early. So it depends on how flexible you want to be really with that type of power in this situation that y'all have. We always recommend that you have what's called callable bonds. So that means that after a certain period of time, if you feel like you'd like to pay it off after a certain amount of years, you have that authority to do so. And so all that requires is that you contact us if you'd like to pay it off early. We go to the bank, let them know that, hey, we're going to be calling that bond back and paying you off. And in that timeframe, so say for instance, after year five, if you want to start paying down on that bond, instead of having it being a 15 year term, you start paying it down and it gets to roughly eight or nine years. Those years that you start paying off early, you'll get that savings back and you won't be paying interest on that amount. It does give you the authority to do so. What we've seen is that if you feel comfortable with, like usually we usually put about, I don't know, 15 year issuance, we like to have it at about a five year call protection. That means you can't call or pay down the bond early for the first five years. Now, I'm not sure how y'all would feel one way or the other. We can go out as far as you'd like for that call protection. And when you add call protection years, all that really does is it gives the investor slash the bank a little bit more cushion and a little bit more protection on their own so they know that they're going to get at least a certain or X number of years of payment before you call back early on it. But what I've usually recommended always is five years. If y'all don't feel like y'all are going to be paying it down after the five years, we can go out for as long as you need to. And that's what this kind of meeting is about, is to kind of discuss these types of things a little bit, maybe if you have like any inclination one way or the other. And this doesn't have to be final by any means, but I mean, is there any questions really about call protection or being able to call off the, or pay the bonds off early? Any questions on the front page that you see there?
No questions.
Okay. And the second page that you see in front of you, it's a little bit what Jennifer was talking about, it kind of is just a more blown up view. When you have an issuance like this, or really any kind of financing for the most part, it's in a biannual payment. You'll have an interest payment on the first part of the year, and then followed by an interest and principal payment six months later. And you'll see it broken down there in between the months of June and December. For your fiscal year coming up right now, that you have budgeted already for $30,000, for this issuance, you'd only have to pay the interest payment first, and then for the next fiscal year, you'll see that that's when the principal and interest payments start kicking in for December 2018. But other than that, really is that I have placed a financial advisory agreement in front of Mr. Cooper there. And really what that does, it just allows us to move forward legally with this process and everything that we've kind of been planning on. It's, you've seen that in that contract, it truly explains what we do, what we offer. You know, we like to believe that we're a way more personal, in-service type of firm. And that, you know, we don't have a retainer for our services ever. And that if you ever wanted to terminate that contract, all that's required is a 30 day notice. And this is even that.
Well, Mayor, are you going to address that, or do you want me to address it?
What we have on our agenda is to consider authorizing or approval of a resolution authorizing publication of notice and intention to issue certificates of obligation. And that's what the council's going to be voting on. Now, and I don't want to throw a wrench in the works, but the financial advisory agreement, I don't know how binding it is, but it's not something that's on our agenda now. But I'll tell you, I think in just a little while, we're just about done with our agenda up to the point where we're going to be going into an executive session, and so there's a break there. And if you want to talk maybe with our attorney, and of course, I'd like to be there too, I'd like to see if this is something we can sign. I get the feeling you want to walk away with a signature on each of these and-
I mean, I'll let you know that in the agenda language that's provided by the bond counsel that says authorizing certain other matters relating thereto includes this type of action as well. And look, I don't mind one bit. We can, I'm not trying to push you or one way or the other. That is not a big deal. I would never do that to any of my clients. And I would like for y'all to take as much time as you need before signing something as a financial advisory agreement. I mean, it's, I'd be more than happy to sit and talk with y'all forever long if you'd like to.
Well, and there's nothing wrong with going forward with what is on our agenda, that I know. And so if there are any more questions-
If you do not receive the financial advisory agreement tonight, do you still go ahead and put the ad in the paper and put it into motion? Or can you not put anything into motion until you have the financial agreement?
We can do the ad. The ad is not really anything relating to financial advisory services. That's just legal requirements by the state of Texas. As it pertains to me getting in touch with placement agents and bidding out packets and those matters, I would have to kind of wait until that moment.
But you really can't do that for the first, in the two weeks that you put the ad in the paper?
No, we begin that process immediately.
Immediately?
But I, we can put it on hold if necessary.
If we have a call meeting very soon, it could be done then also, even though you had hit the ad in the paper, since we're passing a resolution is what I'm meaning to do.
Correct.
Well, should we go ahead with the motion to sign the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Sure.
I would like to make a motion that we approve a resolution authorizing publication of the notice of intent to issue certificate of obligation to the principal amount not to exceed $500,000 and authorize certain other matters relating hereto to fund construction of a public works facility and relocation of approximately 1,000 feet of water line.
All right, we have a motion. I'll say, all right, and a second, is there any more discussion, any more questions?
I do have one thing. It does say authorizing certain other matters-
It does.
-relating to. Julie, is that not, would that not include this financial advisory agreement?
Potentially. I mean, I would argue that it would include everything that was in the packet. This was just given to the mayor today at the time of the meeting. It's not something that anybody had before the meeting, so nobody's read it. I would just rather be conservative when it comes to the meetings.
I'll leave my motion, yes, Mayor.
All right, so we have the motion. And is there any more discussion? All in favor?
I is unanimous.
And if you have a little extra time-
Oh, yeah, definitely. I think it'll be long. I'd be more than happy, and I get exactly what she's saying. You know, I'll be happy to sit down and talk with y'all about it as well.
You're right about the fact that our agenda does include the words "authorizing certain other matters relating thereto," so.
All right. I want our attorney to hear that. No doubt, no doubt. That's what she's there for.
All right, sir, thank you.
Thanks.
That's what I, that's what I suggested. Just so I don't lose these.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and we can move on to departmental reports.
Mayor and Council, the administrative department for the month of September answered 821 calls in 20 operating days, received five general inquiries and three open records requests via the website, and we received a total of 17 requests for public records. We accepted one final flat request and one zoning variance request. As far as permits go, we accepted 10 commercial permit applications for mechanical, electrical, signs, and demolition, and issued 12.
Mike?
So we accepted 10 commercial permit applications for mechanical, electrical, signs, and demolition. We issued 12, and two were carried over from the month prior. We accepted one CO application and issued zero COs. We accepted 19 residential permits for plumbing, re-roofing, foundation room air fencing, and miscellaneous accessory structures, and issued 20. So far in October, we have received no commercial or residential permits. In utility billing, we accepted and entered 42 new utility accounts. It's 16 utility account disconnections. We processed 69 purchase orders and issued 60 general fund checks, 52 water fund checks, one core technology fund check, five insurance trust fund checks, one police seizure clear fund check, a total of 119. Also, I want to make sure everyone's aware, the planning and zoning commission will meet on Wednesday, October 18. Here at the community center at 6:30, we do have one place open and two alternate places open on the planning and zoning commission. So if you're interested in surveying, please submit your application to City Hall before 5:00 p.m. on this Thursday, October 12, and the commission will consider those at their meeting on the 18th. The Parks and Recreation Board has also moved their regularly scheduled meeting from October 19th to this Thursday, October 12th at 6:00 p.m. here at the community center. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, first I got to say is National Night Out was a great success, even though the rain kind of moved in on us for a little bit, but it was a great turnout. We really appreciate the community coming out and supporting the police department. For the police department's report, it's 16 hours of training, 38 incidents. They entered 956 calls for service. And communications entered 131 911 calls, and for calls for service was 1,071. Their training hours was 34. Total calls received on emergency, them answering the phone, was 3,110. And they processed 28 record reports. And then training for municipal board was five, and they closed 372 hours, or correction, 372 cases out.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the library for September, our door count was 1,577 people, which is a little bit down, which is normal for this time of year. Circulation was 2,022 items. Of the 1,577 people that came in through our doors, 85% were adult cardholders. 15% were minor cardholders. Of the 2,022 items they checked out, 76% were books and audiobooks on CD. 10% were DVDs and 14% were computers. We hosted eight children's programs, attended by 113 children and 70 adults respectively. 14 programs with 46 young adults and one adult program. We answered 76 directional questions, 251 reference questions, and 120 patrons were given one-on-one computer help. Our Friends of the Library book sale was a success, bringing in $1,782, which included book sales, donations, and new memberships. What's really nice is our library was able to assist a library in South Texas, the Rockport Public Library benefited from all our leftover books. They came and took them away as they lost their entire collection. I think it helped quite a bit. Our library hosted a meeting on September 8th at collaborating libraries in North Texas. Five local, or excuse me, regional libraries represented with Hal, Melissa, Ben Alstine, Gentrin, and Munster. We were also awarded a grant from Walmart for $500.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. For the month of September, we had a total of 81 medical calls, 71 of which those were emergency medical calls, 10 of which those were non-emergency transfers. For fire service related calls, we had a total of 21. Of that 21, those calls included four grass fires being dispatched, one structured fire, three responses to firearms, three possible gasoline calls, two assist PD calls. We had mutual aid calls, one of each to Y-Ride and then Hal, and then five miscellaneous fire calls.
And Steve has asked me to give the public works update. As you know, we were on code red for a water line break earlier tonight. Just looked at the, the tank is back up to 15 feet, so Steve's breathing a little easier. We should be back on regular service by the morning. Public Works is continuing on the Dallas Street and Shreveport Water and Sewer Project. We expect it to be finished in about three weeks or so. We have finished installing the new grinder pumps out at the wastewater treatment plant. We're waiting on the roof over the, over the, over the RAS pumps that it's connected to. Public Works is working with Grayson County Precinct 1 to improve the drainage ditch behind Graywood in the cul-de-sacs to relieve that temporary flooding area. We've got the plans and are working with Grayson County to get that done. Steve is also working on a educational program to get, have people quit dumping grease down their sinks. That is a major problem with the sewer system, and it's causing a lot of the backups and things that we've been doing. The crews have finished the Dorothy Fielder gazebo handrails and building painting. The contractor's working on the merry-go-round at North Park. Engineering and Public Works is working on the 2017-2018 street project list. That'll be coming forward to you. I just received bids today for the downtown parking striping project, so I will be sharing that with Steve and City Hall to get that rolling. We talked about the 121 drainage expansion on East Jefferson for, and the relocation of the water line. With your approval of that resolution and the COs, we will be getting started on that project. And Steve wanted to remind the citizens, if they notice any problems with streets, signs, water, or sewer, there's an interactive webpage that they can create work orders. And opening the city website and click off contacts and go to the public works related page, and you will see on my.gov.com, fill out a form and it will contact other works to get that done. During the last month, there were 24 water turn-ons, 28 water turn-offs. They installed nine new meters, replaced our damaged meter boxes, there were two changing out meters was 10, eight stop signs, three street signs, 27 locates for contractors, three water leaks, fourth one was tonight, eight meter leaks, five animal control calls, eight sewer calls, well, water well callouts were nine, sewer blinding water jetting was four, facility maintenance three, meet with contractors and inspections was 10, and there are six development projects active. Just to let you know, Palladium is in the final stages. They are going to begin asking for certificates of obligation for partial buildings around the site as they finish them. So they'll start inhabiting sections of the big building and then the individual buildings. We'll do temporary COs to allow occupancy at that point. The elementary school is in full swing. If you haven't been out there, they've got two football fields worth of paving down on the north bus lane parking lot. Longham Mechanical has just submitted their plans out on Spence Road. It's in the EDJ, adjacent to the History Maker. They're going to move their operation out there where the daycare is. So they're going to do that. Next week, for consideration will be the Sanford, what is being called Sanford Park subdivision, which is the old North Park Estates, which is adjacent to the elementary school. You approved Chapel Creek tonight, preliminary plat, and you approved the Graywood 2- You approved Chapel Creek tonight, preliminary plat, and you approved the Graywood 2 preliminary plat and zoning tonight. McDonald's is in full swing and restoration for the dual drive-ins and building improvements. The CTMA water line is fully active. Let's see, and we're working, this, we're receiving qualifications for the Park Master Plan Consultant next week.
Lynn, what's the timeline on lifting the boil order for the city or?
They'll have to go out and test in the morning, so the boil order will probably be removed in the morning.
The message that I received on my phone, the Code Red message, said that we'd be notified in the same manner by, by Code Red when the water was okay, when it was all right, when the, when the boiling order was lifted.
Right.
And I was wondering, I don't know if you can even answer this, but the reason for all the emergency measures and the boil order too is because the water level in the elevated tank dropped so low, is that?
It dropped too, well, it dropped so low, but it, the bowl is all that we really measured. It dropped to one foot before we got the leak stopped and then we started pumping it back up. Like I said, it's back up to 15 feet. Steve, Steve is real comfortable at 20, so we're getting there.
So once we get that phone call from Code Red that says the boil order is lifted, then then everybody can start using water just as they were?
Yes, sir.
Do you think anyone, suppose after we get that, that call from Code Red that says the boil order is lifted, if anyone has a little bit of sediment or something in their water, is there anything?
All they would need to do is flush that line. Before, before the Code Red is lifted, we'll, we'll get the bacteriological sampling saying that the water system is good. There may be some rust or some deposits that are in the water line because it got so low that may show up. They just need to flush the line till it's clear and their water will be safe.
Okay. Nothing, nothing infiltrated our water system?
No.
Just because the level dropped?
No, no, just the level dropped and the pressure may, I don't, with the height of that tank, we probably had enough pressure to stay above, but to be safe, the boil order was issued.
Thank you very much. All right. Well, I think I'm going to let what Lynn has said suffice as the city manager's report. That's, that's the kind of information we've gotten from a city manager anyway. And as for Mayor closing comments, I just appreciate the turnout tonight and I appreciate everyone that's here building for us and with us. And the demeanor of the whole, the whole meeting tonight was just great. So thank you all.
I'd like to say thanks to the department heads. It's nice to see them again and they were really good reports. Thank you.
I don't know, just looking at the, the planning and zoning, the subdivisions that are coming, that are hitting the plat, on the north side of town, that's exciting. 46 new utility services, that's, that's a lot of people coming down. So very exciting. So thank y'all for coming. Always appreciate that.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming also, citizens, business owners, and otherwise interested parties, and also a lot of our city employees that were here tonight that usually aren't here. I'd like to thank them all for coming. Two announcements. One, we have a chamber breakfast in the morning at 8 o'clock at the Welcome Center. Mary Jane Coons, are?
I believe it's Grayson County.
United Way.
Nine Way.
Grayson County United Way is going to be. That's from 8 o'clock to 9 o'clock at the Welcome Center. Also have, let's see, notice of elections on November 7th. There are seven amendments to the Texas Constitution. Also, there's going to be a Texas Patriots meeting October 23rd, which is a Monday at 7 o'clock at Buck's North Barbecue. Speaker is State Representative Larry Phillips to discuss the seven amendments to the Texas Constitution and info on, and, Antifa. November 4th will be Sheriff Richard Mack, and the program will be to honor the blue. Request that all police, fire, and sheriff come so that they can be recognized and honored.
I want to thank you everyone for coming, and I want you to know this is the last month. You are going to have an opportunity to visit the Van Alstine Historical Museum. We close at the end of October. As a matter of fact, we're not going to be open for Halloween. Don't come for graffitiing. But this is the last month, and then the volunteers work during the winter time to bring our museum up to date. So it will be the close of our opening season. So if you haven't been to the museum, Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, 1 to 3. And if you haven't been, you're really missing something. Come and see what was. Thank you.
As the father of a kindergartner, it was great to see all the first responders who were out at the elementary school this past week. So I want to thank you all for your awesome teaching and lessons and photo opportunities and kids running in and out of ambulances and police cars and that kind of thing. And on that note, I saw a call as well for a need for bottled water for the fire department. So citizens here, folks that see the live stream, just please stop by fire department, pump off some water for those guys. They're hardworking guys.
All right, we're, we're about to enter into our executive session. I'll tell you before I read this, we're going to hold our executive session in here for, for one reason. I hate bumping firemen out of their, their rooms back there because oftentimes they haven't had enough sleep and if we hold our executive session there, then they have to leave and sleep in the cats of their trucks or wherever, and I hate doing that. So we will have our executive session in here, which means you won't be able to stay for the executive session. You're welcome to, to come back in. If you're waiting outside, I wouldn't expect you to do that. But for, pardon?
It's plenty of time to go to Diamond's and grab some water and then bring it back.
Bronze, you have a Sunday.
There you go. And I have no idea just how long this executive session will last, but pursuant to that, I'm going to read this, this part here. Executive session in accordance with chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code in parentheses, open meetings law, the city council may enclose executive session pursuant to applicable laws. Item number 23, all items below for executive session. Pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code annotated in subchapter, subchapter 551, the council will enter into executive session to discuss, to discuss the following items. A, section 551 dot 071 in parentheses, consultation with attorney regarding, one, procedures and standards for variances, two, city manager's contract, three, procedures for filling vacancies created by a city manager resignation, and four, removal and/or appointment of members for the Van Alstine Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. B, section 551 dot 074, personnel matters, deliberate appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, reassignment common duties, discipline, resignation, or dismissal of city manager and fire chief. And so, the time is now 8:12 p.m. and I'm going to adjourn our regular session, and I expect we're going to executive session at about 8:30 p.m. So thanks, everyone. All right, we adjourned from the executive session at 11:15 p.m. The time is now 11:18 p.m. and we're going to reconvene the regular meeting. Are there any motions?
One motion to appoint Ryan Dockery as interim fire chief until a permanent replacement is found.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? None? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, that's right. Okay, we have four in favor. Ms. Salmon is abstained from the vote. So, Ryan Dockery, you're the.
Stand down. I'd like to see.
Congratulations. If that's a good thing. All right, any other statements from council or motions?
Your part, Zuna.
Yeah, thank you. I also wanted to say that we did not find comments made on the Facebook to be acceptable from an elected or appointed official, and, but we will be addressing a policy at our next meeting, so there is no action to be done at this time.
And so, I think there's nothing further than?
I make a motion, adjourn.
Second.
Um, further.
Any objections to adjourn?
No further discussions.
All right. All right, the time is 11:20 and we are adjourned.